I think I'm the devil. I'm... I hope that's what she was saying. She gets it. Yeah, girl, she gets it better. We need to be objective. That's the way to do it. But thank you. Yeah. You know, the... I read that article she sent. It was like, it was a lot of tears right out there. I do this. I know. And the thing is, it's gonna be like, you know, we can't increase the... It sucks. I don't see it. I mean, I must be playing with my phone.
Yeah. 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 Yes.
So, to say that we're not gonna build because we can't... All the time. And we have to play... It is what it is. Gotta do it. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Too bad. Too bad.
There's breach.
Yeah. Yes.
You're not used to sitting in chairs with people, huh?
I don't have to sit.
Jack will sit next to me.
Okay, then I'll sit. Are they not confused?
You don't wanna sit in front of that man.
I don't want his name.
You wanna sit in front of your name, not that one.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You don't want that one.
That's Michael's. I could sit in front of Michael's.
Oh, right.
I wanted him. Did a last meeting.
Do you have a mark? I think that also hooks into it over there.
She's the one that... Where they just won't do it. They will build.
Call the name.
Well, what you can do...
But I don't think... But it's gotta be someone who's got us.
Absolutely.
Like, stay up there. Yup. We have not... Why they did it. Why would he sit there? You're familiar with anybody. Why would he like... He's only like a Padawan. Why would he...
Everybody, we're streaming.
And that's all he had to say.
Whatever works for you. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Can you... Not really...
Have the microphone, you know, people do now.
Hey, alright. I can see why you went off on him.
I think it was Jeff by somewhere. Ooh, is that my stuff? Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna sit down here, but is that yours?
Says Jeff.
Oh, okay.
Are you Jeff? Here's my hat.
What'd you do? Mess up my stuff? I think I'm okay. Actually, it's so high.
I think I have mine.
And then it's... I'm gonna... I'm gonna take it. Okay. I'll have this. Okay. I know, but you already have your down. Okay. That's good. It's like... I'm tired. I feel sorry.
I'll take care of some of that over here. Yeah, alright.
That's okay. That's fine. What happened was, did we get the deal for the money?
What?
I guess it is this business working out.
And they just don't fill the... They just don't fill the units.
Okay.
He's made an hard decision to do it. Because then you get the money. Because it's so hard to try to enforce it.
Of course.
Good. Just again, to let everybody know, we are streaming live on YouTube. And the mics are very sensitive.
Everybody, bring our conversations.
Let's start that. Oh. It is here.
I don't know. You know. I don't know. What'd you do? Mess up my stuff? I think I'm okay.
Oh, man.
Actually, it's so high.
I think I have mine.
Okay. And then it's... I'm gonna... I'm gonna take it. Okay. I'll have this. Okay. I'll do this. Don't make it too low. I know, but you already have your down. Okay. That's good. It's like... I'm tired. I feel sorry.
I'll take care of some of that over here. Yeah, alright.
That's okay. That's fine. What happened was, did we get the deal for the money? Something was coming...
What?
I guess it is this business working out.
And they just don't fill the... They just don't fill the units.
Okay.
He's made an hard decision to do it. Because then you get the money. Because it's so hard to try to enforce it.
Of course.
Good. Just again, to let everybody know, we are streaming live on YouTube. And the mics are very sensitive.
Everybody, bring our conversations.
Let's start that.
I hope you know. I don't 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 know.
Just again, to let everybody know, we are streaming live on YouTube. And the mics are very sensitive.
Everybody, bring our conversations.
Let's start that.
I hope you know. I don't 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 know.
Is that mic working?
Yeah.
He's not coming. Wasn't an email. He wasn't coming. So, is everybody... You guys are all good?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of Bethlehem City Council for Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. The time is 7:25 here in the rotunda. We did get a late start due to a committee meeting running a little bit long. And if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance before we get started. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Callahan.
Present.
Mr. Cologne. Ms. Cramsey Smith.
Present.
Ms. Negron.
Present.
Mr. Reynolds.
Present.
Dr. Van Wurt.
Present.
Mr. Waldron.
Present. Mr. Cologne did inform us that he did have a family emergency that came up today, so he will not be joining us this evening. Prior to our consideration of the regular agenda items this evening, council will conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the zoning text amendment requested by the property owner related to the OMU Office Mixed Use Zoning District at the Martin Tower site at 1178th Avenue and Bill Number 16-2021, as amended by a June 15th, 2021 city council-initiated amendment relating to limiting the permitted number of parking rows and driving aisles that was proposed by Councilman Cologne. In connection with the public hearing, there are two communications. I will ask the clerk to read Communication 6A. A memorandum from Darlene Heller, Director of Planning and Zoning, with an attached privately proposed zoning text amendment bill that would affect the Office Mixed Use District at the former Martin Tower site at 1178th Avenue. The bill reviewed by the City Planning Commission was amended on June 15th, 2021 by a city council-initiated bill proposed by Councilman Cologne that limited parking spaces between a principal commercial building and an arterial street to two driving aisles and four rows of parking spaces. Prior to the council amendment, the proposed bill did not contain parking space limitations. At the July 8th, 2021 meeting, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the city council support the city council-initiated amendment. The commission previously voted to support the original privately proposed zoning text amendment bill.
And Communication 6B.
A letter from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission concerning the review of the privately proposed zoning text amendment that would affect the Office Mixed Use District at the former Martin Tower site at 1178th Avenue. The bill reviewed by the... By the Planning Commission was amended on June 15th, 2021 by a city council-initiated bill proposed by Councilman Cologne that limited parking spaces between a principal commercial building and an arterial street to two driving aisles and four rows of parking spaces. Prior to the council amendment, the proposed bill did not contain such parking restrictions. The commission stated that aspects of the proposal exhibit partial consistency with the regional plan and that the revisions to the initially proposed bill by city council-initiated amendment were an improvement over the previously proposed zoning text amendment. However, the commission's letter also included a number of concerns and recommendations. Recommendations to improve consistency with the regional plan and planning best practices related to reducing automobile dependency, seeking review in front of the zoning hearing board, ADA concerns, environmental concerns, pedestrian access, and other concerns stated in the body of the letter.
I will call the public hearing to order, considering a privately proposed zoning map amendment proposed submitted by the property owner related to the OMU Zoning District at the Martin Tower site at 1178th Avenue and Bill 16-21, as amended by the June 15th, 2021 council-initiated amendment. I will first recognize representatives of the zoning amendment petitioner to speak about the zoning request as amended by the June 15th council-initiated amendment.
Mr. President, may I make a statement for...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, I asked a property owner to consider hiring a third party to review the project with fresh eyes and to make recommendations or suggestions if they deem necessary in an effort to improve and better communicate to the city the goals of this project. I also requested the third party taking into consideration April 5th, 2019 memo and the concerns of city council. The developer hired Alloy 54, an experienced Bethlehem firm. I believe city council will get a better understanding conceptually of the plan. It is my hope that you will appreciate this presentation as seen as I do, which is a much improved concept of this site. In addition, I strongly support the amendment that is before city council this evening, and we will continue to work with Alloy as plans come to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I will turn to the representatives from Alloy 5.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. We're gonna flip through a presentation. Probably should take about two and a half hours or so. My clicker's not working, so Angela's gonna run the presentation. I'm gonna flip. We're here tonight to present 1178th Avenue and our review of the site. So, I thought first I would tell you a little bit about us and who we are and a little bit about my firm. So, you understand who's making the presentation. My name is Randy Galliato. I'm an architect. I've been an architect here in the city of Bethlehem for over 20 years. I founded Alloy 5 with my partner, Mike Metzger, who's sitting on a beach right now. I'm sure he's thinking about us. And we founded the firm here in Bethlehem, and our namesake is a reference back to the city's history. So, a little bit about me, a little more. I've done a lot of projects, planning projects and design projects throughout all the cities here in the Lehigh Valley, very involved in the community, and serve as Governor Wolf's... Chairman of his professional selection committee. My partner, who's at the beach, is also an architect in the city for over 20 years. He's worked on a lot of projects. Think of the one that everyone's most recognizable is the Arts Quest Center at Steel Stacks. He was the project architect for that. And sitting next to me is Becca Rustock, who I think probably all know in the room for her time here at the city. She's our Director of Development. She's worked with many communities over the years, and we're happy to have her on board to help us tonight. Our firm was founded on three principles: healthy design, honest collaboration, and hard work. That's why we did not name the firm after ourselves, but those three principles. And this is our pride and joy, our home in West Bethlehem on 5th Avenue. We purchased this building about four years ago. We are neighbors to the site that we're assessing tonight. We love our neighborhood. We love the impact that we've made in our neighborhood, and this is a photo that we take with us throughout the entire state as we have the journey of our career. We blend three services together: architecture, interiors, and graphic design to practice communication by design. We do mostly public projects, and with public projects, you have to communicate them very well to clients and committees and the public, so we've developed a practice that caters to that. This is our team. Many of them drive by the site every day, walk by the site every day. Many of them are city residents. We are a practice of about 17 professionals and number of awards and recognitions from many different entities. Eastern Chapter of American Institute of Architects, Bethlehem Chamber. We also volunteer a lot. This entire team does. So, I wanted to start today by talking a little bit about our planning background and what we've done in the past. And we were awarded special citation by the American Institute of Architects for a planning project that I'll bring tonight, just to let you know that every site is unique, and that is no different with the site that we're talking about tonight. This is Reading Area Community College, a college campus that floods. We did a master plan for them to celebrate their campus, provide a collegiate feel to the campus, and we were awarded that award a few years ago. Our work is throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania, north through Wilkes-Barre, and is south into Florida. And that's our home, and that's the site. As I said, we are neighbors to the site, and we walk by and drive by the site every day.
Thanks. So, we have an interesting connection to the Martin Tower property. So, we're a West Bethlehem business, and when we were renovating our building, we actually found this architectural model in the basement of our property. So, we're not sure about the exact story, but the history of our property is that it was a dry cleaning business, and there's a vault in our basement. So, apparently, back in... Back in the day, people would store their furs and their silks and even jewelry in a vault that was kept at their dry cleaner. So, we believe that this ended up at our office because somebody, the family that owned the dry cleaner, had a good relationship with one of the steel executives. So, it's become a bit of a mascot for us. We actually had a guy in our office took this home and cleaned it up and repaired it. He painted it. He ended up kind of rebuilding some of the sections with balsa wood. It was mostly dusty and dirty, so he did a lot of swiffering, I guess. But it's kind of become, like I said, a mascot for us, but it's also an important tool. So, architecture historically had been done by building these to-scale models with balsa wood and toothpicks, really. And today, we do all that same type of modeling, all digitally. So, that's what we're gonna be presenting here tonight. So, interestingly enough about this project, it's become a bit of a learning tool. We take it to schools. We had a class from Calypso come to our office a few years ago to check it out, and we talked to them about how architecture has developed over the years. We're always trying to find new architects, and we're happy to invest in them if they're eight years old. So, we've packed the model up and some other materials and taken it as an exhibit. We went to a career day at Eastern Area Middle School, and it's been displayed at the National Museum of Industrial History and at the Kemmerer Museum as part of Historic Bethlehem. So, last year, the AIA recognized our efforts here and awarded us an award of excellence. So, I'll run a little bit through our process, and this is kind of a process that we use with every type of master planning that we do, really with any type of development that we do. We start with an analysis. We move into modeling the site, and then we kind of present our findings. So, to open up, we're gonna review our analysis. And everything we do really starts with research. I'm a big reader. My past life as a reporter, I did a lot of reading, and we were able to obtain all the... A bunch of documents that the city provided to us, that the developer provided to us. We reviewed the zoning code. We reviewed correspondence with Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, with Bethlehem Planning Commission, with Bethlehem City Council. There were a number of letters that were sent in regarding this property, and so we were able to review those. We looked at property records through the county website, and if you remember, a few years back... A few years back, excuse me, I think it was 2007, Jeff Speck, who was an urbanist and a planner, was here to do a plan. He's a contributor now to a website called Strong Towns, which has kind of become, I would say, like an industry-leading progressive planning website. We did review some of the material there. We reached out to our friends at Historic Bethlehem and at NMih, and they provided us with some historic photos and a little bit more background, history of the site. So, one of the first things that we did was, okay, let's look at the site through history. So, these are Google Earth images, actually, so these are... You know, everybody can look at these. This isn't special stuff that we developed, but we just took a look at the site for roughly the past 20 years, and we noted here the amount of change that's happened in the city. Now, I think anybody in this room would tell you that there's been an enormous amount of change in the last two decades here in Bethlehem, but it's important to note that even in this northwest corridor, there's a significant amount of change. The two big items that really jumped out to us when we looked at this part of the analysis were the demolition and new construction of Nickman Middle School, which is kind of at the bottom middle of your screen, and also the transformation of the former Durkey Spice Plant. So, old neighbors in that neighborhood will tell you that it used to smell like cinnamon on some days. That Durkey plant was destroyed, and then there was a redevelopment there. It's now the Lowes and Woodmont Mews and Price Right. Excuse me. So, after we feel like we can kind of wrap our arms around the site and understand a little bit of the history and the context, we move pretty quickly into modeling. And as a group of architects and designers, we do like to use our hands a lot. So, our first stage is sketching. There's a lot of tracing paper. There's a lot of scribbling. We give Randy a pretty hard time for kind of sitting in the conference room and doing a lot of doodling and then calling somebody in to move it quickly to the screen. So, that's kind of our next stage. We use a software called Building Information Modeling. This is pretty commonly used. A lot of architecture firms in the region use this. Construction management firms use this. Everybody in our office is cross-trained on this software, so Revit is the brand name that we use. We also use Enscape, and we use Google Earth as well. So, once we have a model to look at, instead of, you know, building one like our old Martin Tower model, we look at one digitally, and then we start to move into our findings. So, what we did for this section was we broke down our findings into categories, and we based these on the correspondence with the Planning Commission, with the planning staff, with LVPC, and with what I would say the general concern of the public. So, our first step is site context and topography.
So, we picked these five, you know, items to break down that were not subjective. They are just simple facts, and we use that modeling that Becca just mentioned to model the site, and we'll end our presentation with showing you an experience through the site as it would sit if post-development. So, that's where all of that comes into play. So, if we can go to the next slide. What's unique about the site is there's actually a 65-foot drop from the corner of Eaton and 8th Avenue to Burnside, and the developer... We'll talk a little bit about this more in a minute, but the developer did a really good job with the site context and the site topography in making that part of the design.
So, you're actually looking right now at a Google Earth image of the area, and we have kind of blocked out our site just to call attention to it. So, when we started to model this in our office, the first thing that jumped out to us about northwest Bethlehem was the heavy amount of residential in this area. So, in digging through some of the property records through the county, what we found was that Kwin Avenue neighborhood was sort of the first subdivision. Homes in that area date to about 1951 was the earliest one that I could find, mid-'50s. This was really like an American Dream type of neighborhood for a lot of residents of Bethlehem. They were able to move here, a small, single-family home with a yard and a white picket fence. Actually, one of Mike's neighbors, or actually, I think it was his uncle, is a resident of that neighborhood. So, we kind of watched the neighborhood develop over time. So, throughout the later part of the '50s into the '60s and even the '70s, the second development that grew out of this area is called Rosemont Manor. Excuse me. And those are, again, single-family homes, that same style. The most recent residential in this area is, like I mentioned before, Woodmont Mews, right behind the Lowes. We also are calling out so that the street at the top of the page is actually Shanersville Road. So, the residential on the opposite side of the street is Hanover Township. We all know that Shanersville Road delineates between the city of Bethlehem and the Hanover Township. It also is the line between Lehigh County and Northampton County. We wanted to call out those residences just because we know they're outside the city, but we still think that this development would affect them, and we want to be good neighbors. So, with all of that residential, there's been a lot of recreation out here, and though we didn't do a full recreation study of the city, we thought that this neighborhood probably has some of the best access to the amenities across any neighborhood in the city. So, you have your northwest Little League fields, and you can just see the tip of James Buchanan Elementary School off to the left, and then at the top of the screen, you see the kind of beginnings of Illex Mill Park in the Lehigh Little League. The Bethlehem Steelers Football Field is out there, the best municipal golf course in the... I would say in the state, but definitely in the region. Bethlehem Muni and the Nine-Hole Course. The newly renovated Memorial Pool sits in Illex Mill. I know that just opened a couple months ago. And the ice rink is out there, the Dog Park, Illex Mill Park, and then we call attention to the Monocacy Way Trail, so that's gonna flow right behind our site. And then we also have called out Historic Burnside Plantation. So, interesting to note on this slide is that Burnside does abut our site directly, but as Randy said, there's a pretty steep drop at the end of the 1170 site leading into... Leading into Burnside. Other amenities in this area is a pretty strong commercial corridor. I think everybody here is familiar with the Westgate Mall. The newly renovated Weiss Market has been a pretty popular stop. I know I stop there sometimes on my way out of the office and heading home, and then there's been a lot of development along that way. Again, we're calling out some development that's on that Hanover Township side, but I think still important to note in terms of the impact of this plan. And then another commercial corridor, which we're all very familiar with, in Lowes and Price Right and the CVS. A number of medical office buildings have been developed there, a bank, Wawa, and some other amenities for the neighborhood. So, also interesting in this area was this kind of industrial buffer that flows between the residential neighborhood and the highway, so it kind of creates this separation, so you don't have like that heavy traffic going right past people's houses. So, there's some self-storage buildings there. There's some warehouse buildings there. The Puppy Palace Doggy Daycare is down there. Christmas City Printing is down in that area. And then you have another industrial area on the opposite side of the site that's kind of built up around Monocacy Creek there, where Casilio Concrete is and where Moravian University has done some recent investment. I know that their Sports Medicine Building is located in that section, too. So, again, during the study, one of the items that jumped out to us, and something that was pointed out by LVPC a number of times in their letter, was the accessibility of this site and its close proximity to 378. So, we call out 378 there. The location of 378 has really driven a lot of the planning decisions made in this corridor. We did find some history. There's actually a great historic page on the Bethlehem Library website that the... One of the options for the direction that the highway was gonna run would have cut... Would have actually cut between that industrial area and the neighborhood, so fortunately, they didn't make that connection. But this is interesting to note again, because when 378 was built, it was actually a connection to the Lehigh Valley thruway, which we know now is 22. But at the time, and it was about the late '60s when this was developed, 22 was the connection to New York City. So, 378 gave you a direct access to Manhattan from Bethlehem, and now, actually, it, you know, it's about a five-minute ride to 22, and it connects. You can get all the way across the Lehigh Valley, and then if you go the other direction, so if you go south on 378, it's about a 15-minute drive to Interstate 78, which is now kind of the more normal connection to Manhattan. So, what you're looking at now is our model placed onto that Google Earth image.
So, the next part, we'll talk about site access. I think we all know that it has great access to the arterial streets, 8th Avenue and Eaton Avenue, along with 378. Those are the yellow roads there. With the existing entrances makes this plan very easy to navigate and lessens the impact on the neighborhood. So, those areas there, you see those nodes, are the existing entranceways, and they also created one new, which has already been approved between the MOB buildings. There, which we find appropriate because it eases traffic within the development.
That's also, too, interesting to note about that additional entryway. It fills out the fourth branch of an existing three-way intersection, so there is already a light there outside the CVS and in between the CVS and the St. Luke's Building, so this additional entrance to the 1170 site kind of completes that four-way branch. So, then there's an interior network of roads. Martin Court Tower Drive and Steel Drive will all be built to city specifications according to this plan, so those will be dedicated back to the city, and then the thinner lines are kind of your interior routes, including that connection, that new connection point.
And what we'll see when we get into navigating through the site is the... Steel Drive takes on the topography of the existing site, and then the site starts to slope. And when I say that, the developer did a good job here. They balanced the site, so there is no export or import, so it lessens the impact on other sites, truck traffic around the site, so there will be no moving of dirt off of this site or onto the site.
So, we also wanted to talk about multi-mobility. So, the white lines are where onsite are, where sidewalks are gonna appear, and you'll note that there is a sidewalk access all the way around the site as well, and a nature... Excuse me, a nature trail that flows around the back of the site. There'll be two connection points with the Monocacy Way Trail, which we'll get into in a little bit more detail, and there are two existing Lanta bus stops on 8th Avenue, so the access getting onto 8th Avenue is... Will be currently maintained. So, our next item that is discussed in our findings is the environment. This is always an important issue regardless of where your development is happening. It's something that we need to consider for any type of development. And our first item on that is stormwater. So, right now, the development that was previous there kind of predated stormwater management regulations. So, Martin Tower opened, I believe, in 71, 72, and the first enforceable laws were... Came in like 78. So, the considerations that the current developer is taking on the site were not taken on previous to that. So, this is a provisional no-detection area. That's what it's called when that situation occurs. It's been existing like this for about 50 years now. So, what you get with that is...
We can kind of wrap our arms around the site and understand a little bit of the history and the context. We move pretty quickly into modeling. And as a group of architects and designers, we do like to use our hands a lot. So our first stage is sketching. There's a lot of tracing paper, there's a lot of scribbling. We give Randy a pretty hard time for kind of sitting in the conference room and doing a lot of doodling and then calling somebody in to move it quickly to the screen. So that's kind of our next stage. We use a software called Building Information Modeling. This is pretty commonly used. A lot of architecture firms in the region use this, construction management firms use this. Everybody in our office is cross-trained on this software. So Revit is the brand name that we use. We also use Enscape. And we use Google Earth as well. So, once we have a model to look at, instead of, you know, building one like our old Martin Tower model, we look at one digitally and then we start to move into our findings. So what we did for this section was we broke down our findings into categories and we based these on the correspondence with the Planning Commission, with the planning staff, with LVPC, and with what I would say the general concern of the public. So our first step is site context and topography.
So we picked these five, you know, items to break down that were not subjective. They are just simple facts. And we use that modeling that Becca just mentioned to model the site. And we'll end our presentation with showing you an experience through the site as it would sit if post-development. So that's where all of that comes into play. So if we can go to the next slide. What's unique about the site is there's actually a 65-foot drop from the corner of Eaton and Eighth Avenue to Burnside. And the developer, we'll talk a little bit about this more in a minute, but the developer did a really good job with the site context and the site topography in making that part of the design.
So, you're actually looking right now at a Google Earth image of the area. And we have kind of blocked out our site just to call attention to it. So, when we started to model this in our office, the first thing that jumped out to us about northwest Bethlehem was the heavy amount of residential in this area. So in digging through some of the property records through the county, what we found was that Keweenaw Avenue neighborhood was sort of the first subdivision. Homes in that area date to about 1951 was the earliest one that I could find, mid-'50s. This was really like an American Dream type of neighborhood for a lot of residents of Bethlehem. They were able to move here, a small, single-family home with a yard and a white picket fence. Actually, one of Mike's neighbors, or actually, I think it was his uncle, is a resident of that neighborhood. So we kind of watched the neighborhood develop over time. So throughout the later part of the '50s into the '60s and even the '70s, the second development that grew out of this area is called Rosemont Manor. Excuse me. And those are, again, single-family homes, that same style. The most recent residential in this area is, like I mentioned before, Woodmont Mews right behind the Lowes. We also are calling out, so that the street at the top of the page is actually Shanersville Road. So the residential on the opposite side of the street is Hanover Township. We all know that Shanersville Road delineates between the city of Bethlehem and the Hanover Township. It also is the line between Lehigh County and Northampton County. We wanted to call out those residences just because we know they're outside the city, but we still think that this development would affect them and we want to be good neighbors. So with all of that residential, there's been a lot of recreation out here. Though we didn't do a full recreation study of the city, we thought that this neighborhood probably has some of the best access to the amenities across any neighborhood in the city. So you have your northwest Little League fields, and you can just see the tip of James Buchanan Elementary School off to the left. And then at the top of the screen, you see the kind of beginnings of Ilex Mill Park in the Lehigh Little League. The Bethlehem Steelers football field is out there. The best municipal golf course in the, I would say in the state, but definitely in the region. Bethlehem Muni and the Nine-Hole Course. The newly renovated memorial pool sits in Ilex Mill. I know that just opened a couple months ago. And the ice rink is out there, the dog park, Ilex Mill Park. And then we call attention to the Monocacy Way Trail. So that's going to flow right behind our site. And then we also have called out historic Burnside Plantation. So interesting to note on this slide is that Burnside does abut our site directly, but as Randy said, there's a pretty steep drop at the end of the 1170 site leading into Burnside. Other amenities in this area is a pretty strong commercial corridor. I think everybody here is familiar with the Westgate Mall. The newly renovated Weiss Market has been a pretty popular stop. I know I stop there sometimes on my way out of the office and heading home. And then there's been a lot of development along that way. Again, we're calling out some development that's on that Hanover Township side, but I think still important to note in terms of the impact of this plan. And then another commercial corridor, which we're all very familiar with, in Lowes and Pricerey and the CVS. A number of medical office buildings have been developed there, a bank, Wawa, and some other amenities for the neighborhood. So also interesting in this area was this kind of industrial buffer that flows between the residential neighborhood and the highway. So it kind of creates this separation, so you don't have like that heavy traffic going right past people's houses. So there's some self-storage buildings there, there's some warehouse buildings there. The Puppy Palace Doggy Daycare is down there. Christmas City Printing is down in that area. And then you have another industrial area on the opposite side of the site that's kind of built up around Monocacy Creek there, where Casilio Concrete is and where Moravian University has done some recent investment. I know that their sports medicine building is located in that section, too. So again, during the study, one of the items that jumped out to us, and something that was pointed out by LVPC a number of times in their letter, was the accessibility of this site and its close proximity to 378. So, we call out 378 there. The location of 378 has really driven a lot of the planning decisions made in this corridor. We did find some history. There's actually a great historic page on the Bethlehem Library website that the, one of the options for the direction that the highway was going to run would have cut, would have actually cut between that industrial area and the neighborhood. So fortunately, they didn't make that connection. But this is interesting to note, again, because when 378 was built, it was actually a connection to the Lehigh Valley thruway, which we know now as 22. But at the time, and it was about the late '60s when this was developed, 22 was the connection to New York City. So 378 gave you a direct access to Manhattan from Bethlehem. And now, actually, it, you know, it's about a five-minute ride to 22, and it connects, you can get all the way across the Lehigh Valley. And then if you go the other direction, so if you go south on 378, it's about a 15-minute drive to Interstate 78, which is now kind of the more normal connection to Manhattan. So what you're looking at now is our model placed onto that Google Earth image.
So the next part, we'll talk about site access. I think we all know that it has great access to the arterial streets, Eighth Avenue and Eaton Avenue, along with 378. Those are the yellow roads there. With the existing entrances, makes this plan very easy to navigate and lessens the impact on the neighborhood. So those areas there, you see those nodes, are the existing entranceways. And they also created one new, which has already been approved, between the MOB buildings. There, which we find appropriate because it eases traffic within the development.
That's also, too, interesting to note about that additional entryway. It fills out the fourth branch of an existing three-way intersection. So there is already a light there outside the CVS and in-between the CVS and the St. Luke's building. So this addition, additional entrance to the 1170 site kind of completes that four-way So then there's an interior network of roads. Martin Court, Tower Drive, and Steel Drive will all be built to city specifications according to this plan. So those will be dedicated back to the city. And then the thinner lines are kind of your interior routes, including that connection, that new connection point.
And what we'll see when we get into navigating through the site is the, Steel Drive takes on the topography of the existing site, and then the site starts the slope. And when I say that, the developer did a good job here. They balanced the site. So there is no export or import, so it lessens the impact on other sites, truck traffic around the site. So there will be no moving of dirt off of this site or onto the site.
So we also wanted to talk about multi-mobility. So the white lines are where onsite are where sidewalks are going to appear. And you'll note that there is a sidewalk access all the way around the site as well, and a nature, excuse me, a nature trail that flows around the back of the site. There'll be two connection points with the Monocacy Way Trail, which we'll get into in a little bit more detail. And there are two existing land-to-bus stops on Eighth Avenue. So the access getting onto Eighth Avenue is, will be currently maintained. So our next item that is discussed in our findings is the environment. This is always an important issue regardless of where your development is happening. It's something that we need to consider for any type of development. And our first item on that is stormwater. So, right now, the development that was previous there kind of predated stormwater management regulations. So Martin Tower opened, I believe, in 71, 72, and the first enforceable laws were, came in like 78. So, the considerations that the current developer is taking on the site were not taken on previous to that. So this is a provisional no-detection area. That's what it's called when that situation occurs. It's been existing like this for about 50 years now. So what you get with that is kind of a chaotic flow of water. Water just flows in any which direction that it wants to flow. And again, that's been an existing condition for about 50 years now. So what you want to do in stormwater management is take that chaos and kind of put it into a more controlled situation. So I'm going to give a very basic and elementary description of stormwater management using a detention basin. This is a very common solution to stormwater management. We see these all over the place. And again, this is a very like base-level, elementary explanation. Essentially, what you have is a detention basin, like a pond is kind of a local vernacular. And you have a system of two pipes. One, a lower pipe that's going to be used for your inflow, and then a higher pipe is going to be used to get the water off the site with a weir, which sort of works like a lever. So in the event of rain, or, you know, after this winter, geez, all that heavy snow that melts it, you get inflow into the detention basin. So it's different from a retention basin. So a retention basin is going to hold the water. The detention basin is really just slowing and regulating the flow of that water. So water flows in, the sediment sinks to the bottom, and the clean water rises to the top. And then once that hits a certain level, it activates that weir, again, that little lever system. And then it flows into the existing municipal system, or it's returned to the site using site irrigation. So that site irrigation is something that we see. If you're ever driving, and Randy used this example when we were talking about it in the office. If you're ever driving north on 378 and you drive past Lehigh Valley Mullenberg and it's raining, or it's just rained like the day before, or two days before where it's been really heavy, sometimes you'll see their sprinklers are on. That is the same type of site irrigation system that will be used on this site. And then we have just eventual return to those normal water levels and the whole cycle starts all over again. So essentially, what we're doing is we're taking the chaos of the existing water flow site and we're trying to put some order on it. So at full build, this is what your site's going to look like, and here's how the water flow will work.
So everything flows downhill to the detention basin, and then eventually into the city-managed stormwater system. I will say, from a stormwater management standpoint, it's very heavily regulated these days by DEP, and developer will not receive a permit to move earth on this site unless all those conditions are met.
So green space is another issue that comes up when you're looking at the environmental impact. The zoning for this district calls for 10% of the green space to be maintained, or excuse me, 10% of the site to be maintained is green space. In this case, about 10 acres is being maintained, which amounts to about 20% of the site. So that entire mature tree line is called out to be preserved, so that those old trees that kind of separate our site from both 378 and from Burnside Plantation are all planned to be maintained. And then another thing that was called out because of this zone was that a tree inventory had to be performed. So there were about 478 trees in the inventory. And what's proposed now, according to these plans, is the addition of 485 trees. And then again, talking about the sidewalks, it's a little under three miles of sidewalks. So if you got into taking walks during the pandemic, this would be a nice place to stretch your legs. I will note, too, that the extension of the sidewalk along Shanersville Road, a few years ago, there was some work done on that bridge, and then the sidewalk kind of drops off just before the entrance into Burnside Plantation. The developer has pledged to complete that sidewalk line. There you go. Thank you, Randy. So that would be one access point to Monocacy Way. And then the other access point is an existing access point, which is going to be maintained. I will also say here that the developer was leasing about 100 parking spaces to some of the St. Luke's employees that are in the area. And those employees had to cross Eighth Avenue. They also had to cross Eaton Avenue. That lease lasted for about three years. There were zero incidents of pedestrian problems in crossing the street. So there you can see where those St. Luke's buildings are kind of clustered around the site, along Eaton and along Eighth Avenue as well. We just wanted to call out here, again, that, you know, looking at new residents that might be moving on this site, new businesses that would be moving on this site, the access to amenities here, again, was, is great and remains great. So whenever you're dealing with a historic site, you always are concerned about sightlines. And it comes up in more cases than just historic sites, but it's always prevalent when you're dealing with history. And as volunteers with Historic Bethlehem, I think we'd be in a lot of trouble if we didn't take a look at this. So we have another simplified diagram to take, you know, an average six-foot tall person. And what we've done is that person is actually placed on the far-right side of the site. So that would be Burnside Plantation. So if you were at the Blueberry Festival this past weekend, you'd be standing at Burnside Plantation. And if you looked up towards the 1170 site, this is what your sightline would give you. Now, because of that mature tree line, you're blocking, I mean, almost 99%. There's just a little tip of the roof that you may be able to see if you're especially So our next part of the findings is zoning. And so we, you know, it's always about balancing the zoning uses. All the uses that were proposed by the developer on the site in this plan are permitted by right. And we look at those zoning uses and then we, you know, we're discussing the site parameters, too, things like the topography, where should they be located? And that kind of moves us into our next phase here. So I think it's important at this point to talk to you a little bit about how we talk in the office when we start to talk about building uses, because although we do spend a lot of time talking about buildings and boxes and things like that, it's really important that we think about people when we talk about buildings. As architects and as designers, our number-one priority is health and safety of people that are going to be using these buildings. So in this phase of our planning process, is we always just like, okay, well, if this is the use, what are the people, what's the mindset of people that are going to be using that use? Particularly with medical offices, we want to remember that some people that are going into a medical office are getting bad news. Sometimes they're getting really bad news, right? Sometimes you're getting good news, though. So that's always, it's always important for us to be aware of. It's also important to remember that, you know, I've driven my grandparents to medical appointments before. So I have to drop them at the door, and then I have to go around and park. That's a pretty common practice with medical office buildings. So in this section, what we're really talking about is like our experience with these users and what comes up when we're talking with a user like this. We have pretty vast experience in dealing with the different users. So our conversations about medical office users revolve really around safety. We talk a lot about visibility. They want their patients to be able to find them and their employees to be able to find them easily. You're dealing with emergency vehicles that need to get access on and off the site pretty quickly and access through your site. So having that easy access is really very important. So with the, I thought you were saying something. Sorry about that. So there, the developer is proposing a grocery store usage. When we've worked with grocery stores in the past, one of the things that they talked to us about is demographics. Some grocery stores like to compete, which is why if you go down to Coopersburg, there's a Weiss Market on one side of 309, and then there's a Giant on the other side of 309. Depending on who your developer is, some of them like that kind of competition. Again, that ease of access is kind of universal amongst all developers. Convenience is really important because, you know, I'm a last-minute shopper and I've definitely made the early Thanksgiving trip into a grocery store and had to run and get, you know, a jar of cranberry sauce at the last minute, and I want to get in and out of there pretty quickly. Grocery store development, also, you have to consider the cart path. So, you know, a customer coming in, filling up a cart, trying to get from the front door to the trunk of their car safely. We've built several types of different convenience stores. The focus of these discussions is usually around highway access, and especially when they have gas. And this proposal includes a gas station element. So they want you to be able to get off the highway, fill your car up, maybe grab some snacks, hit the bathroom, and get right back on pretty easily. Quick trips in and out. And this is another case where you're dealing with a lot of competition. You know, Wawa has kind of become, this was our discussion the other day, too, was Wawa's kind of grown into the new type of fast food. So the Wawa on Eighth Avenue is actually one of the busiest stores in their portfolio. Anytime between like 11:00 and 2:30, it's packed in there for people trying to get lunch. A lot of those trips come from our office, too. Commercial office, in a site like this, the type of commercial office that you're going to be drawing from, and again, remembering the history of 378 and why it was built, and looking at that access that LVPC pointed out a couple times in its letter, in its letters, rather, you're looking at corporate headquarters, regional offices, things like, we were talking about ADP in Allentown, where, you know, you have a couple hundred people working out of one office. Very heavy corporate culture. You're hit with that corporate culture as soon as you enter the door. They want you thinking about the company all day. They've got like amenities like kitchens and onsite cooks and things like that to provide food for you during the day. Prominence is a big issue. You want your clients to see your logo long before they walk into that door, and you really want it to be visible. It's a great recruitment tool when you can, you know, introduce somebody to a fancy new office and, you know, give them the key and hire them that day. So we've done a number of hotels. Hotels are also very concerned with highway access, so it makes sense that they be attracted to this type of site. Prominence is another issue there, and high visibility. What hotels really want, and what the discussion always revolves around with hotels, is they want proximity to amenities and proximity to events. So things like Music Fest, all the activities that happen during Christmas time around here, not to mention the universities having parent's weekends, homecomings, graduation, that kind of demand is what's going to attract a hotel. And then restaurants have kind of grown into being a destination. And looking at this site for our analysis, we kind of said, you know, if you didn't work on this site and you didn't live on this site, the most likely business that you would visit here would be a restaurant. So restaurants typically want two things. They want lunch and they want a dinner crowd. So your lunch, you want to have proximity to businesses, so you have people taking clients out, you have salespeople coming in to kind of woo you to sell, to start specing their products. And then you want to be near residences to get that dinner crowd, that happy hour crowd, and additional business on the weekends. And then residential, obviously, this is an area that has really blown up lately in the Lehigh Valley. We're doing a lot of residential projects right now. It seems like the phone is always ringing with people wanting to put more residences in this region. So whenever we're looking at an existing site and we're trying to place where residences could go, we always want to put them on the quietest, kind of calmest part of the site. That mature tree line that's staying is kind of, helps us like a little bit of a buffer there. And we also, in looking at the plan, thought about, okay, well, most of your pedestrian traffic is going to be coming from the residences. Sure, people might take a walk during the day, get out of the office a little bit and get some fresh air, but the majority of people will be walking from their residence. And we did look, and I'm not, you know, we didn't want to get too deep into the tax generation question, but when you're looking at a variety of users, it does diversify the economic impact of your site. So with the great diversity of users that are proposed on this plan, the numbers add up to about 2.7 million in taxes generated. Now, that includes, that's city, county, and school district. But it is three bills that you do have to pay if you're a property owner.
And we do this just to make sure that the municipality won't be in the negative in paying out for this development. And that won't be the case here.
So when we studied the site, what we kind of did was try to break up where those users were placed, and we kind of broke the site down into these three main areas. So Area A is that Eighth Avenue corridor, and that has your medical office, your grocery, and your convenience and gas station. Then the more central portion of the site is Area B, and that's kind of where we saw your commercial office would want to be located. They're going to get the view from the highway there. So if you want to slap a nice fancy logo on there, that's something that's going to be attractive to your clients and your customers. The restaurant sits somewhat central to the site. So it's a little tricky because there is a steep slope, and you can see a little bit of the retaining wall there. So the dead center of the site is really on the slope. So just beneath that, central to the whole site is the restaurant. And then some of your hotel is just above that. You know, your hotel clients, especially if they're in from out of town, they might be hitting that restaurant, so it's easier for them to walk over. And then your other commercial offices along that section. And then finally, an area of C is again, that kind of quiet corner of the site, the calmest corner of the site, and that's where all the residences are designed to be placed. So this residential development will have modern amenities. There is plans for a clubhouse and a pool and a tot lot, so a little like play area, benches and things like that where people could sit outside, not unlike other developments that you see around the Lehigh Valley. So we just wanted to turn, point out again, that view shed, that sightline's from Burnside Plantation, where those, that building off to the left is one of the residential buildings. There's very, very minimal sight from yourself standing on Burnside Plantation. And so the final thing that we want to leave you with is really the experience of being on the site. So once we build out those 3D models, we are able to capture renderings. So we have, I think, six renderings to show, and then we do have a video that's going to give you the feel of driving through the site when it's fully built out as it was planned and asked for us to examine. So this is, you are essentially in a car and you're on Eighth Avenue and you're looking south. Eaton Avenue is the intersection in front of you. We can see the currently-built St. Luke's and then the rendered-out building, medical office building in front of you. So these renderings actually combine photos of the, like, of the current site as it is with the rendering on the top. Now, this would be if we kind of like walked across the street and we were standing now at the corner of Eighth and Eaton, and we were looking into the site. So you see the two medical office buildings and then another office building off to the left there. And then this is a view from Plaza Drive looking across Eighth Avenue. So the CVS would be to your left, the St. Luke's building would be to your right, and you're looking directly across in-between the two medical office buildings at the hotel. And then moving down Eighth Avenue, now we're at Martin Court, again, facing east. So we're kind of at the intersection where the Lowes is, and we're looking at the grocery store and the convenience store to the right. And then ahead of us, I think we can see part of the residences? Or no, I'm sorry, that's part of the commercial office building, right, right there in the And now we're actually on the site, and this is a rendering of what the restaurant could look like. So again, probably the thing that most of us are going to visit if we're not working on the site or if we're not living on the site, this is what it would look like. And you can kind of see off to the left, you can see that retaining wall, and you can see the little bit of a height that's gained over there.
And that's where we say the developer did a really good job with balancing the site to lessen the impact on other sites.
And then this is taken at the far corner of the site. The connection to Burnside Plantation, the existing connection, is kind of to your back. And this is that nature trail. That detention basin is off to your right, and you're actually looking at one of the residential buildings in front of you. And then this is a video. So we're entering with, we're entering in-between the convenience store and the grocery store. And I think we're driving at 35. I think this was rendered at 35 miles an hour. But we are going to, you get the sense that you're moving at the speed of a car, but there are some turns you can just kind of see. You wouldn't really drive like this, hopefully, but just gives you a sense of, yeah, it just gives you a sense of what the site looks like. So you should be noticing the incline here up to this Steel Drive, or Tower Drive, excuse me.
When we make the left here, you can get a sense of the slope of the site and how it is a very walkable site. And it would make a very good walk for an exerciser because there's a lot of hills going So every building is connected with a sidewalk. There is not a building on this site that you can't walk out of and walk to another without being on a sidewalk.
So we're passing by the restaurant here. The grocery store is off to our left. You can see the retaining wall there. And we're looking up, we come up around where the hotel is.
So now you're going uphill, and you can see the medical office building sits about 15 feet higher than the grocery store. And even the hotel is up about eight feet. And you're looking at the hotel now.
Kind of continuing to go up following that incline, and you get a sense of how much lower the restaurant is if you look off to the side, to the right side.
And again, we didn't design these buildings. We just gave you, wanted to give everyone an idea of the type of building. So think of it conceptually, especially the residential that we're approaching on now. But that's the scale of three-story building.
Yeah, and again, we built our model based on the CAD drawings that were provided, based on the plans that had been previously provided to council, zoning hearing board, So we wrap up here and we end up facing Shanersville Road. You can see the residential off to your right, and then one of the office buildings would be off to your left here. So, kind of in presenting a summary of our findings, one of the things that we discussed in the office was, you know, if we gave everybody in here a piece of paper and 50 acres and said to them, "Plan out a site," and then we also ran through all of these findings, like, what would make an appropriate site? Obviously, we're all going to come up with something different, just for many different reasons. So we ran through the site context, we talked about site access, we discussed the environment, we looked at zoning, and we give you an experience to leave you with. we looked at zoning, and we give you an experience to leave you with, and what our final finding is that this plan that's proposed is an appropriate plan, it follows the zoning uses, it fits in with the surrounding neighborhood, it kind of builds around the context, it makes use of the topography, and, you know, you're not, there's no need to add additional dirt so you're not disturbing other sites. It takes advantage of the great access of 378, and it keeps residences connected to the amenities in northwest Bethlehem. So that's the conclusion of our presentation. I know, I know there's probably going to be some kind of comments or questions, I know it's a public hearing, but I think it goes back to the chair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We do have an agenda we're going to stick with, and obviously there'll be an opportunity for council members to turn and ask questions of you. At this point, I'll turn to Darlene Heller, Director of Planning and Zoning, to discuss the privately proposed zoning amendment as amended at the June 15th council meeting.
Well, we reviewed this, as you know, back in March with the planning commission. At that time, our comment on the zoning amendment, the one zoning amendment, was that we had a concern because there was no cap on the amount of parking that could be in front of the buildings between the arterial street and the front face of the building. And what Councilman Cologne's revision does is add a cap to that, so it really eliminated the comment or the issue that we had specifically about the zoning amendments. The planning commission voted back in March to support each of the amendments, and they repeated that vote at their most recent meeting. So they did move that they support the amendments, and they would recommend that council does as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Heller, did you have any comments on the presentation from ALA5 this evening?
We did see the presentation previously. They obviously spent a lot of time going through and addressing some of the questions that came out, I think both from our April 2019 comment letter regarding the overall master plan, and I think they also took a look at some of city council's comments and questions from the last couple or few meetings. So I think there was some explanation that was presented for a lot of those questions and comments. For some of the issues, you know, as we get into pedestrian safety and the landscaping and green space and things like that, we will take a closer look at each of those items when we get into a land development phase, when we see, receive more detailed plans, when each of the specific lots are looked at in more detail. We'll probably also be looking at a revised overall master plan if things change or get tweaked. We would look at that prior to a land development plan submission.
Thank you. At this point in our agenda, we'll turn to members of council for any questions or comments to Ms. Heller and the administration, as well as the presenters from ALA5. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mr. Oldren, a question. So then, as far as the plan is concerned versus the questions about Mr. Cologne's amendment, who's not here, should we be asking the administration questions about the amendment? Or how is that going? Because as we've talked about before, the plan, which we appreciate the mayor pushing for, it's not the amendment that's in front of us.
Right.
So I wasn't sure, you know, whether or not it, whether or not we should be talking to, and it's certainly not ALA5's amendments, so whether or not we should be talking to how we should separate those questions, comments, I guess, to make sure that the conversation about the plan and what was included in the plan is separate from the conversation about the zoning text amendments. Because as we've talked about before, as much as we like the idea of these things being included, like city council's not in a position by which we're able to say, well, you know, why don't you do that, why don't you add that?
Right.
As it is contingent to our vote on Mr. Cologne's amendments.
And that's a good point to clarify, Mr. Reynolds. The plan that is being presented is not one for council to approve or disapprove. We can give our comments and feedback on it. Clearly, you know, it's a sharp plan to build a, have a 3D rendering and a drive-through of a site makes the sense and feel of it a lot more tangible. But that's not our intention of the public hearing this evening. Our intention is to review the zoning text amendment that was brought to us originally, and we amended. Essentially, is the same thing that we've been kind of discussing for a few months now, with the exception of the change of, that Mr. Cologne brought forward of limiting the parking spaces. So that's really the intention of our discussion this evening on the council perspective. That is the agenda item as it's put, not necessarily the plan that was presented from ALA5 this evening, which I do find value and is helpful to visualize. So I would say if, I mean, any council member can give the comments that they please to, but again, our agenda item in front of us is the zoning text amendment that was being asked of us by the developer.
I'm not going to make any comments on Mr. Cologne's amendment. I do just want to make a couple general comments there on the presentation. And I do think that, first of all, I want to thank ALA5. I think that there were, there's a lot of things in there that, seeing for the first time, I was impressed with as far as some of the concepts that have been added in there. I think that, you know, when you take a look at the uses and you understand, and I'd never seen that before, the kind of breakdown as far as what people are looking for. You think of these things often from like a physical point of view, rather than what the people are looking for as far as these uses are concerned. So I really appreciate that. I think that you've brought a lot of value to this and explained a lot of things that previously had not been, had not been talked about. I, for one, will admit, I didn't know how those detention ponds work. So like, and you know, the one thing that you take away from here, too, looking at those pictures throughout history, is just kind of how bad of a hand, with all due respect, Bethlehem Steel did hand us to the future. Like, the fact that it was built the way it was with all of the macadam, and the fact that that runoff has been going off there for 50 years, and the fact that we lived in a society once upon a time that had no DEP permitting process, you know, created something that is, you know, a challenge, as you guys talked about, you know, moving forward. So I think that, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate everything that you guys have added to this. I would just, to echo Ms. Heller's comments, is that obviously the concepts here, as far as what is included, are good, but the rubber really hits the road as different parts of the site are developed. So when we're talking about what that pedestrian access looks like down to the trail, and we're talking about what those intersections look like, the concepts are great. I think that's the most that we can kind of ask of a plan at this point without going through the detailed land development process. But I'm going to just, you know, say, as I've said before, is I think it's really important for our planning department, and as we go forward with, you know, designing, or as the plans come in, that we are aspirational as far as like, how effective can we make those walkways? How effective can we, you know, make sure we protect those? And those are things that should come up as it's developed in front of the planning commission. But, you know, it's not, I don't think to ask you guys details about things that we're putting in your 3D renderings is necessarily what's the, you know, the best thing, as much as it is just to say that I think the concepts here that you guys included are good, and I think they'd be ones that the developers would be very wise to take into account as they continue to develop the rest of the plan. So, thank you, Mr. Oldren.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Reynolds. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Dr. Benworth?
Thank you very much. I'm really impressed with the contextualization of this project within Bethlehem itself. I think that's so important to understand how it sits within our city, and it's made it much more cozy, honestly, to have a visual rendering, even if it's prettied up. I get the sense that there wasn't much modification from the original plan, it's really more of a visualization of it, so it's not so scary. I do find it still uncomfortable that there's going to be a gas station there, but it's private property, and you can build to write for zoning. I guess my question, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but I would, in our upcoming, if we do have any upcoming dialogue on this, would ask you, how does this fit within our climate action plan? I think that was one of the main contentions that city council had with this plan, is a very unclear understanding, not just how a retention pond works, which was very educational, thank you. And I would like to see where the existing city sewer lines are, because our great, one of our, my great fears is that the overflow is going to go into the Monocacy again. So that being said, thank you very much. I think this is a good first step in terms of understanding this project and what it can be, and hopefully there will be some tweaks and modifications to it. So to go back down to this text amendment itself, I'm going to reiterate what I said last time, which is, I still haven't heard a good reason why the developer cannot go in front of the zoning hearing board. If the little guy, the citizen of Bethlehem, wants to do something, like put in extra parking, guess what we make them do? We make them go to the zoning hearing board. But there's no good reason embedded in this here, in any of the conversation that we've had on council, why the developer cannot go in front of the zoning hearing board and ask for the parking that they need for those two medical buildings. It's a pretty simple ask, and it's a pretty simple process, it's one the rest of our citizens follow. So I cannot support this text amendment tonight because I feel that we should be asking our developers to do the same thing that our citizens have to do, which is go in front of the zoning hearing board and request a variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. It really did add a lot of flavor and some, gave us a lot, well, me, myself, I guess I should speak myself, a lot better insight into what the project will look like. I have a couple questions, and I'm not sure, I guess they're for Ms. Heller, okay? The one in the amendment on Section 2, it says, "No new vehicle driveway shall enter or exit onto an arterial street unless the applicant proves that no feasible alternative exists." And it looks like the amendment to this states that this article does not apply to the OMU district. Is that something that we're adding in addition to the parking? It's actually on, I think, the...
Yeah, I don't have it. I just have what's been revised for the, for the front parking. But the provision is that no new access should be to an arterial street, and that applies anywhere in the city for the design guidelines. We want the access to come in from the rear. In this situation, Eighth is an arterial street, and so is Eaton. And the intersection that they're looking at was built to be a four-way intersection. It has a traffic light in it, it was always anticipated that there would be access there. So the provision that's in the zoning ordinance right now is a little bit impractical, it's very impractical for this scenario. We would encourage access to come, to make that a four-legged intersection right there. It's just, that's the way that it was constructed.
Yeah, that makes sense, because it's already there. So, okay, now, I understand that. I guess what I'm wondering is, it makes sense for this development, but if it's changed, then it's going to be applicable to any OMU development, district development, correct? And is that, what are the ramifications of that?
Well, there is no other OMU district in the city. The OMU zoning district was created for the 53 acres here at this intersection because it is a very unique site in the city of Bethlehem.
Okay, so it would only be applicable to this development? Okay, great. That clarifies that, thank you. The other issue, I guess, or questions I have, is you stated that the Bethlehem, yes, the Bethlehem Planning Commission did approve the amendment, correct? And I have the letter here from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, but can you speak to this letter? Because in my reading of it, it appears that they have some concerns.
Well, it's a little awkward for me to speak for someone else's letter, in all honesty. It does say, though...
I will jump in and just say Becky Bradley has signed up to speak this evening, so in due time, we will hear from her.
Okay, great, that's fine.
Would you rather I?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, just one quick comment in response to Dr. Benworth's comment about going to the zoning hearing board, is I don't think this was necessarily intentional on behalf of the developer, but by coming to city council in the process that they did, we have seen progress here as far as what has happened on the site, and I think that that's a positive. And I think that the fact that it came to city council for this conversation, and we raised a lot of things, and I'm not going to speak for the mayor, but, you know, after we raised a lot of issues, the mayor asked, you know, asked the developer to engage an independent third-party system. That process would not have gone on if they just would have went to the zoning hearing board. And like I said, I don't think that was intentional on their part, considering what we have now, what we've now done, but I think it's absolutely progress, though, that we've had this public conversation here. And I know that, you know, there's been a lot of frustration over the years with the zoning hearing board granting variances and doing different things that have kind of, you know, since they're not elected and all of us are, up here are elected, is that it's allowed us a public space to have this conversation, to talk about it. So while I don't think it was intentional on behalf of the developer, I think the product of this in front of city council has been a, has been a positive one. And I think that it's been positive for the community, and I think we have a better plan now in front of us because we've gone through this process. And I don't think that would have happened if it just would have went to the zoning hearing board. So I think that that's something that needed to be said. Thank you, Mr. Oldren.
Thank you. And I would just say, again, this is our public hearing, there'll be no vote from council this evening. Our typical process is a public hearing, and then the following two consecutive meetings would be first and second reading, and at that time, council would vote. I think it is helpful to see this plan and to see what the developer has asked of us, and to turn, focus back on to what is in front of us this evening, not approval of the plan that was presented by ALA5, but approval of the zoning text amendment that council had previously amended. And I, too, had concerns that Mr. Cologne brought forward about the parking, since there was no limit to what was asked, and more specifically, tailor the ordinance to what the developer was asking of us, and seeing that in the rendering looks and feels appropriate. And I would just state, again, we will not be voting this evening on this, and the question at hand is the zoning text amendment that was brought to us, that council then amended, and went back through the entire process that is before us this evening. At this point in the agenda, we will turn to public comment. First, we'll give a call to Becky Bradley, then open it up to anyone else in the room who would like to make comment on this master plan, pardon me, on the public hearing that is in front of us. You're free to make a comment on the plan or the zoning text amendment that was brought to council. And then anyone else at home who would like to make comment to council on the public hearing, the number to do so is 610-997-7963. Good evening, this is Bethlehem City Council calling.
Hello, Becky Bradley.
Hi, Becky. You can proceed with your comments to council.
Oh, thank you, and I just wanted to thank council and ALA5, the mayor, and the planning staff for a lot of very good information and discussion this evening. You have received a copy of the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission's review of the proposed zoning amendment to the OMU district, which, again, we believe is in more in character with future LV, the regional plan, than the previous amendment. But we still have a couple of comments that the commission has asked me to relay to you this evening. And again, I appreciate ALA5 providing some renderings that show some of the more pedestrian context potential of the site. But at the end of the day, looking at just a simple aerial in Google Maps, you can see what's proposed across the street at the Martin Tower site compared to the CBS and the site with the St. Luke's Neurology Associates, the PNC Bank. Those buildings are set up basically one parking lane away from Eighth Avenue. The commission, LVPC, still believes that there's no reason why the developer needs that extra row of parking at the front of the buildings, which essentially creates a suburban condition, when really, as ALA5 outlined, there's a whole mix of different uses and districts coming together in this location. So being able to plan for that transition and not reinforce a more suburban condition becomes really important. Again, it's important because this is one of the most transformational sites in the Lehigh Valley. I would actually argue today, it is the most important redevelopment site in our entire region. It's the best located, it's a center of people and jobs, it's at the center of the transportation system, its location of high multimodal connectivity, there's a series of sidewalks, a lot of people walk along Eighth Avenue, Eaton Avenue, going down the Monocacy Way through the Burnside Plantation and the neighborhoods surrounding. The city has made major investments and coordinated with the private sector to ensure that there's adequate transportation system, which puts pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists on the same level, which is what we call transportation equity. In fact, the city of Bethlehem adopted the first Vision Zero policy back in 2016 in the entire region that is moving toward zero pedestrian vehicle and bicycle and ADA accessible, and ADA fatalities, serious injuries, and injuries at all, stressing that leadership position of the city now and into the future. In addition, with the new climate action plan, which again, is the first in the region, showing the city's leadership yet again on this issue, pedestrian cyclist ADA accessibility becomes very important to managing air quality, to slowing speeds down, and making places more safe. So, connecting housing, business developments, historic sites, the trail network into a seamless transportation system vis a vis improvements at this site is critically important, not only to the city itself, but to our region, and I would argue even nationally or internationally. Look at what the city's done with its World Heritage application. Look at what the city has been recognized through the Urban Lands Institute with the work over at the Bethlehem Steel Site. Again, you have this really, really amazing opportunity to do it again, and really be a leader, not only for the Lehigh Valley and for the citizens and the businesses in the city, but for our nation and even beyond. At a minimum, the setbacks in building lines should be equivalent to that along Eighth Avenue and Eaton Avenue in the shopping district where the PNC, CVS, and St. Luke's Neurology, I'm sorry, I struggled with that word, Associates Building is located. Again, that's one parking lane deep from Eighth Avenue. This will help reinforce the gateway aspects of this area of the city and provide visual, economic continuity, and reinforces the stability of the city's economy now and into the future. I just wanted to echo one more thing. Every major vehicle manufacturer in the world, including Volvo Mac Trucks here in our own Lehigh Valley, including Air Products, which is a major developer of fuel cell technology critical to the movement, long-distance tractor-trailer movement, so our region is innovating in this, this regard as well, and that's an important point. But every major vehicle manufacturer in America, and in the world, has declared that by 2035, at least 50% of all new vehicles will be electric or alternative fuel. So, thinking ahead then to what a gas station could be reused at, as, within a very short amount of time, really around a decade, rethinking or actually planning for, then figuring out charging stations, electric availability on the site, broadband connectivity as we use more and more data, as we're more and more connected, is going to be critically important as the city then negotiates with the developer as well. I know Darlene Heller, who I respect a lot, has started to have these conversations with the developer, and I think it's very important from a regional perspective that this also reinforces the site's long-term economic viability now into the future. And I promise, really, really, one last thing. This has to be accessible to cyclists. Cyclists do not ride on sidewalks. They are required by law to ride on the roads. And so, you know, smoothing out curves, so cars always take very large curves very quickly, making sure that then the cars are actually slowing down so they can share the road with cyclists and with pedestrians and with people who are mobility impaired, is going to be important. So, I echo again what Darlene said, the devil's in the details. There is some definite positive movement here, but we really encourage the city to continue having these dialogues with the developer and make sure that the most valuable site in the Lehigh Valley becomes the shining star of this region for now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make comment on the public hearing? Yes. You can step up to the microphone, please. Over here in the middle.
My name is Anna Zavrucha. I live at 341B Spring Street. The speaker who just spoke, because basically took the words out of my mouth, I also feel that, just kind of from my own take, Bethlehem is, to me, one of the most beautiful cities on the east side of the United States of America. We have really broad streets. We have a historical history that goes deep and long, and I think as the speaker just spoke out, we are also at a transition point in, in our future of our cities to make them no longer car-centered cities, but people-centered cities. And the thing she mentioned jumped out at me, even though that was very instructive and very appreciated your, your demonstration. I saw no bicycle paths. I saw no charging stations for electrical cars. This whole thing, and even when we look at price right lows, I mean, we see all that macadam, and I love seeing all those trees on the other side, but macadam is done for. You know, it's, it's, you say you want healthy design. Healthy design means let's get rid of the macadam. Let's redesign our streets so that, yes, 30 years down the road, we're not going to have gas-driven cars anymore. We're going to probably have, you know, the future future will be flying around, but right now, we're going to at least have electrical cars. And I, and I find that we need to not let development projects become all, I mean, knee-jerk reactions, even though they can be, they can be, you know, made pretty beautiful and pretty considerate, that, that we have to even push our imagination further to the future. And I guess that's what I'm saying, and I agree that we need to be very sensitive to changing the rules for one and not for the others, and that the, the decisions that need to be made have to be ultimately people-centered. Cars, bicyclists should be accessing this area, walkers, electrical cars, all alternative transportation, which I did not really see happening at all on the site. The only thing I saw was nice little turns in a car. You know, where was my bicycle? Where were the walkers? The walking thing was pretty good, though, I have to say. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the room this evening who would like to make comment on the public hearing? At this point, we'll open up the phone line to anyone at home who would like to make comment on the public hearing only. At this time, we will have other public comment in the near future on other subjects, including tonight's agenda. The number to call in for the public hearing is 610-997-7963. Seeing none, the zoning amendment ordinance will be placed on the August 3rd council agenda for first reading. The public hearing is adjourned. Thank you.